The meeting of the Board of Select, Wednesday, February 5, 2020. To water. Please join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to note that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and on local cable stations. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. You had a good crowd out there. And I'll start moving down the agenda. Application for transfer of common 40B license for Ian v. Restaurant Inc., DBA New York Pizza located at 271 East Senate Street and formerly K-1 Patents LLC DBA New York Pizza. Okay, is it? Any other part?
Yeah.
The board is here.
Hi. Nice to meet you. See you guys tonight.
Transfer and the license?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you guys let me, of course.
Well, basically, you're going to be same hours or is there any changing?
Same exact operation.
It's the same operation?
Absolutely the same.
Okay.
Exact same, actually. Not changing anything.
Okay. Board members, you have any?
No.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. If you have questions, I'll call for a vote. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Okay. How's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Application for common 40B license for West Bridgewater Sub LLC DBA Subway 2622 located at 233 West Senate Street, West Bridgewater. It's formerly known as the Hockamon Plaza. Is that?
Subway at the Hockamon Plaza.
Anybody there from that?
Yes.
Yeah. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
And so you want to transfer the license, right?
Well, actually, we just need to reopen it. It was our shop.
Okay.
We had it shut down and we want to get it.
So we shut down for a while, so we want to get it open again. Is that correct?
Yes.
Same operations, same hours?
Yes.
Well, I guess I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I don't know. It seems like a big church up there now. I go by here on Sundays. I never seen so many people. So if you got half those church people there, you don't need anybody else. Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll move that we ask for a motion to approve this.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? How's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right. Okay. Now we get down to Francis Murphy, Scotland Street, Maple Street, 40B project. Francis? Right here.
Patricia McCardle.
Okay. I'll give you the floor and I noticed that probably a lot of these people are there because of you.
I stand.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Patricia McCardle and I along with my neighbors are coming before the board because of our concern with the Cochasset developers and mainly the impacts that it will have on our school system in our small town. With approximately 96 structures proposed that it could increase our school system by about 200 children, that would be detrimental to our school system. We could need four new schools, additional teachers. Our children would lose the small classrooms that they are used to and we could potentially lose school choice. The amount of additional traffic it could bring to our town would require a need for more police and more fire. It could be more cost effective for the town to purchase the land than to have to deal with the much higher expense to the taxpayers later. The land would be a perfect spot for the athletic fields that we are in dire need of or to preserve the land for parks and open land conservation as it is already a historic area. The land houses the skim milk bridge, endangered turtles, a bird, the Indian knoll, and the beautiful walking trails. Mr. Hashim has offered to sell the land to both the town and the resident, so it appears that he is willing to be bought out and we think that this is the best possible outcome for our town. We are asking the town to consider purchasing this land and bring it to a vote as we want to keep our small town.
Okay. I want to hear some figures out here. What is that land? From what I gather, that was purchased for $3 million originally. Okay. And it's half of, he either gave half of it away or something like that, a part of it was wet.
The town. A lot of it's wet. He's still, he's going to be filling in wetland.
Okay. Yeah. I bet you, like, as far as these 40Bs, they seem to be, you know, propping up all over. We got a lot more coming too because land is all over the place, say. But my kind of concern is if the town can afford, you know, to, and, you know, where the money's going to come from and what is he asking a price of that now? Is it stands?
He did offer one of the residents $5 million.
So that's $2 million and he paid for it and?
Well, that was also back in 2016. He bought it for $3 million.
Yeah, yeah, and half of the land. So I just, I want to get all the facts out on the table here to make, before I turn it over to my other colleagues here. Yeah, I know that that whole area, I heard, you know, before you came in, there was about 90, David, 90-plus houses possibly?
96, maybe.
96, okay. Okay, I'll just, you know, does anybody else want to make a comment there, you know, from the floor here? You got a name for the record?
June Metcalf 268 River Street.
Yeah.
From where I said, I'm a lifelong resident of West Bridgewater. My parents, my grandfather were all farmers in West Bridgewater and we have the Community Preservation Act, which people voted on to save the town of West Bridgewater as far as farmland, et cetera, et cetera. And I hope somehow that you will consider using the community preservation money for that project. Saving land lowers taxes and like I said, she has already said, if yet that development happens, the schools are going to be impacted, the character of West Bridgewater is going to be impacted. People are not going to want to live in West Bridgewater. So I hope somehow you will vote to use the community preservation money. Plus, I am downriver from that development, so I and my relatives are all going to be impacted by the water runoff from that property. Currently, the water level is low. The town park has, it's low because they're fixing the town park, so you don't have a true picture of how wet that land is. So please, please, I beg you to save that land.
Okay. Like I was saying, that's a good point. We have, and the community preservation, and it seems to be spent for just about everything now when it comes up before the town meeting. And I think the boards should get more involved in that too, draw more priorities for where you think that that could be used the best, you know. I know, I just talked a little bit to David about it today, my administrator there, and we also have a committee out there, David, that's looking for land for the use of the open fields and all that. And how is that coming? Is there any progress being done there or?
Yeah. So in reference to the athletic fields, I 100% agree that we need them. We've been actually discussing this issue at this level for a couple of years and last year, this board voted to create an ad hoc committee called the Recreational Space Committee. Selectman Kenneyhan chairs it. Greg Glenn is here and another member is here as well and we've been meeting for about a year. So we are actually, we've been identifying parcels and land to be able to purchase and we are actually in active negotiations right now with a large landowner in town, hoping to be able to bring a purchase and sale agreement to the town this May for that exact reason. Obviously, it's in active negotiations. We can't really say anything at this point, but I will tell you, it's a large piece of property for a lot less than $5 million. In addition to that, we believe that we should have some type of athletic sports complex for the town. We need it for the children. We need it for future families. As we see more families coming into town, they're bringing children, they want it, they demand it. It's part of what the 21st century services are. A sports complex now, as we're envisioning, there's still a lot of work that has to be done on it, but the price point on it is normally about $5 to $7 million. There are some neighboring towns that right now are going through the process and they're upwards of 10 to 12. We're hoping we don't have to get near that size. But obviously, there's two costs. One is the cost of the facility itself and the cost of acquiring the land. So I have not been in favor of this project from the beginning. I wrote a letter on behalf of the board years ago. We wrote it to Mass DEP. We wrote it to Mass Housing. I share a lot of the same concerns as the board does in reference to the project. Unfortunately, the state approved it and so it would be nice to be able to get a parcel of property for athletic fields, but truthfully, it wouldn't just be $5 million for the field. It would be $5 million plus another $5, $7, maybe $10 million for these athletic fields. And then the numbers just don't work at that point to spend $15 million in soccer fields. If we could buy, and again, I'm very sorry, we're just in active negotiations right now, but if we can buy a very large piece of property that is going to be vastly less than that and we still spend the $5 to $7 million, we can give what everybody is looking for and save this other parcel of property that that person is looking to develop as well. So we are actively looking at it. It's just not this one. And truthfully, I went out there and I spent a lot of time on this property when it first came up at the end of 2015, early 2016. I heard from people who I think are telling me that God's honest truth, it's wet. It should not be developed. People should not be living there. I am truthfully, gravely concerned, as I know these board members are, because we've discussed it behind the scenes, is what happens to all those people who buy a home, live there, and then they're not going to be able to live, they're going to be pumping out their basements and potentially worse. However, if we all agree that to be true, the last thing we should do is spend another $5 to $7 million of taxpayer money putting soccer fields there because that will be wet as well. That's not the right place for that. Now, the only thing that we could do was that we did have a conversation with the developer. He did donate. He bought 214 acres. He claims for $3.2 million. That's what his pro forma states. And out of that, he donated back to the town 110 of those acres. That includes the bridge for skim milk. That includes trails going out to the river and the Conservation Commission, who is now in ownership of the land. We are working on kiosks and other trails that we're going to put back there because we want people to be able to use it for kayaking and use it for passive recreational space. So from an open space standpoint at no cost, the town was able to acquire 50% of the land back. I recognize it doesn't stop the project. Honestly, I wish it did, but they got approved through the state and as Selectman Ray's and I discussed earlier, our real frustration on this should be with state legislation that puts us in this position because we have, this board and other people have been involved, have done everything we can to not allow that project to go forward, but if the state approves it under the Affordable Care Act, Affordable Housing Act, we're limited as to what we can do.
What is the present assessment of that property as it stands? Say pay $3 million. What is it really largely assessed for?
So honestly, I didn't look up the assessment on it. If it was purchased a couple of years ago for $3 million and then you would add whatever you would to it, I assume that that would become the real market value. Where we own it, we don't necessarily always properly assess land that we own. So he's trying to develop 96 homes on 32 acres and that has not been carved out, so I don't have a real answer at this point.
That community preservation, that's one way to go at it. Another, something like that be taken by eminent domain?
Well, eminent domain, you still have to pay. So you would have to get into negotiations, determine as to how much it's worth. Town meeting then would sell it. The selectman would send a letter, a demand notice, saying that they want to purchase the property. Town meeting then would have to secure the funds and, you know, quite frankly, most eminent domain cases end up in court. Eventually, the municipality will win, but it's a long, arduous process that's going to cost you more than just the asking price for the land.
What would be the purpose of an eminent domain taking?
Yeah, right.
Is, you know, widening the street?
Well, I just brought that out there. You know?
Are we talking about what they're talking about? Are we talking about what Dave talked about on the fields?
What we're talking about, he talked about the field, you know, because he has a committee. Well, how to practice the thing, you know, there's different avenues that we can, that's what I'm tossing out.
But my question would be, this is the first step of a long step.
Right, right.
What do they have to do to go forward? This won't be at the next town meeting. There's a lot of things that have to go. So I, in my opinion?
Well, it's not open the doors so we can investigate into it there and because?
They give a sense of direction what they have to do so they can go forward and they can back and resume when they have more information on how to go.
And we'll probably, you know, come up with our legal advice, we can do what we can do.
It won't be on the town bell. I mean, any town meeting purchase that piece of property.
Well, I don't want to say no, anything we can do and try to speed things up, you know. These people die in necessity. They're the neighbors there and they want something to happen. I'm sort of an action myself, so we'll do all we can, study into it there and see what we can do and see where the money can be appropriated from, you know?
I know what you're saying. I agree with you. I've been in this town for 32 years and I've gone to almost 90 some of the town meetings to second do help, but I'm just saying, they might need a sense of direction. You come this step, now you can take this step, that step, come forward, then come back and go forward.
I think what?
There's no prints up here. There's nothing to show you the plot. It's just what this young lady just spoke about. I'm an old man, so.
I think what?
She just said what she read. So we want to see the whole plan like Dave was saying about the property they're buying.
We have seen the plan. We've been going to the meetings.
But I think it's a longer process than just one meeting.
I think what you're looking for is how to get it to an article and present it at town meetings. I think that's what you're explaining, what the procedure is, if you want to take this further.
Well, I definitely do, but I was hoping that?
Different ways, through petition, I mean, you know, articles go in there.
If I had done a petition, this is, was probably what I would have done.
So there's different avenues to get it on the warrant, you know, it's just.
Dave, could you explain the process to get it to the warrant?
Sure. So depending on how we want to pay for it, one is normally we place a warrant article at town meeting. Our town meeting is normally scheduled in June, but I think it's going to be scheduled in May of this year. At town meeting, then residents would vote on it and also vote on how to pay for it. Quite frankly, if the selling price is going to be somewhere around that $5 million, and just to let you know, I had a conversation with Mr. Hashim yesterday in preparation for the meeting to try to understand exactly what his thoughts are. He informed me that he had a conversation with one of the residents. He said it was an off-the-cuff conversation where he said that if somebody wanted to buy it, he would sell it for $5 million. Supposedly, he sent an email out to someone, I've not seen it, where he said that he wouldn't accept anything less than $7 million. So I don't know what the number is. However, if we want to purchase it, the first step is, is that we would have to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the owner. We would then have to identify how we're going to pay for it. Traditionally, at least the seven and a half years, seven years that I've been here, we go to town meeting with the warrant article, we paid for it, but we don't have enough money in CPC for a $5 to $7 million purchase. We bring in about $184,000 a year. I've not done the math, but when we did the protection on the Anderson farm, it cost you somewhere just under $100,000 a year and that was less than $5 million. So you would probably have to bond it, which means that you would have a two-step process. You would go to town meeting and you would have to receive approval at town meeting. Then there would be a referendum. If everybody remembers what happened with the school, that was a two-step process. You had a referendum vote and you had a town meeting vote and what that vote did was it authorized the town to tax at a higher rate in order to be able to pay for it than the traditional 2.5%. So if we want to do it for May, we'd have to move pretty fast or you'd end up having a call a special town meeting, say in the fall, and then having a referendum vote at that point.
David, where is he in the process? Has he gotten all approvals from the state that he needs?
He has. So I want to separate fact from fiction. When he started the project, he envisioned originally 120 units. Quite frankly, the Zoning Board of Appeals did a really good job to get it down to 89 units. At that point, the 89 units were a combination of three and four-bedroom homes. Normally, most 40B projects will put in a whole bunch of two-bedrooms. He wasn't doing that. Because he was putting in three and four-bedroom homes, there was not a septic system that could handle it. He was going to have to create an onsite septic facility. In order to do that, he had to get Mass DEP approval. Three years later, he still does not have Mass DEP approval for it. I'm speculating on this, but my guess is that Mass DEP is concerned about having one large septic facility on a field that gets as wet as it does. So they have never provided him an approval. He had been in my office multiple times over those years complaining to me, saying that it's not fair. Quite frankly, I agree. If any, they should have just given him a no because if you guys ever came to my office and three years later I couldn't get you an answer, you'd be upset. He should be upset. He never received a yes or a no. They kept saying that they were studying it. My guess is there was a no, but they couldn't want to say a no because it probably would have created a litigation issue with him at that point. With that said, he decided to go a different course. This past summer, he went back before the Zoning Board of Appeals and he amended it to go from 89 units to 96 units. The positive to that is, is that he now wants to put on individual septic systems the way you would in any other residential place. And with the Board of Health, he went out and he did perk tests all summer, meaning that they dig test pits to determine what he can actually perk for. The Board of Health was with him, they're with a engineer who stamps the plans, and they were able to perk about a dozen different sites for smaller individual units. So therefore, there will be three, four, five homes on a shared facility, which we have through other places in town. That's not uncommon. Because it perked, there's nothing the Board of Health can do. It perked. So with that said, he had to reduce the number of bedrooms in the complex because he could not exceed a certain volume for septic. So what used to be 89 three- and four-bedroom units is now going to be 68 two-bedroom units and the difference will be three bedrooms. So the positive is at least it goes from three to twos and there are no more fours. That is the maximum that he could do on what he was able to perk. So at this point, he has approval through the Board of Health for that number of units with the number of bedrooms. He still has to get approval from the Conservation Commission because he cannot just arbitrarily fit, put in wetlands, but under the Affordable Housing Act in Massachusetts, Conservation Commission can stop development within 50 feet of wetlands at a local level. Under the state level, it's within one inch.
Wow.
So we can't prevent it just at the conservation level. They just have to approve it and make sure that he is not actually into a delineated wetland area. If this was under our local bylaws, there would be a 50-foot no-touch area with a potential 100-foot buffer area under a 40B state law protected act that our local bylaws are not in effect. So the final step is, is to receive Conservation Commission approval, but that's only approval that he is actually not putting a building into the wetland, although if the wetland is here, he can go to here. They just have to flag it. That's probably a three to five-month process, which means that he would have the ability to probably start his project sometime in late summer or early fall.
So just to add to that, for over a year, we've been trying to get funding to do a 40B study and the purpose is to try to put down the paper how the 40B laws are detrimental to the town of West Bridgewater. And it's not just your land. This subject comes up every year. It's going to be in someone's backyard and no one wants it there. It's not because we don't want affordable housing, it's because it's being built on wetland and that water has to go somewhere. Our roads aren't built for the traffic. Our school's not built or sufficient enough for a big influx of students and everyone is going to have to pay for this, whether it's water in their basement or building an additional school. We're a farm community and it's not about being snobs and not wanting affordable housing here. It's just trying to keep it affordable for the people who live here. So I applaud you for your efforts, but it's, I feel for you. I really do. It's not the, but it's not the town you're fighting. It's the, it's the state. It's the state laws, the 40B laws. That's what needs to be fought because today it's your fight, but there's plenty of other land in this town that's ripe to be built for a 40B and it's going to affect you one way or the other, whether it's in your backyard or someone else's backyard. We're all going to be paying for it. So unless we get some traction on doing something about the 40B laws and showing that it's detrimental to this town, it's going to keep, it's going to keep happening. I mean, the one fortunate thing about buying the golf course, and I wasn't about, I wasn't in favor of buying the golf course, but it's paying for itself. We purchased that land. It's on a mortgage, but what they're paying to the town in a lease is paying the mortgage.
Eldon, can I ask Dave a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Don't make it tough.
Now, you said if they purchase this property, would that be a two-and-a-half override?
It would have to be.
Can you explain what a two-and-a-half override is? Just sort of, I know what it is, but I think it's not people law.
Yeah, no worries. So under Mass general law, we can only raise our tax levy, which is our total taxable amount that we can tax everybody, commercial, residential, 2.5% per year. We normally pay our operating expenses on that. So whenever you have individual plans or single items that you want to purchase that are large items such as a school, the state of Massachusetts allows a mechanism to allow you as taxpayers to sell vote to raise that limit above 2.5% with the ability to be able to cover what it is that you're trying to pay for. So the negative to that is in the short term, you're raising your taxes. The positive to that though is, is that once that is done and over with, it's no longer on the tax bill. It actually comes off. So on this one here, say a $5 million project, I honestly have not run the numbers, but my guess is, you know, you're probably talking $300,000 to $400,000 a year. That would be the equivalent of probably, knowing the tax levy the way I do, that would probably be the equivalent of about a 4% to 4.5% increase on annual basis instead of 2.5%. So you would do that for the next 20 or 30 years, however long your mortgage is for, and then at the end of that, that extra 2% that you self-tax would then come off at that point. But we get the money upfront from the bank. We would be able to write a check and then we would just take it as a bond payment the way you do, say, a car payment.
Why don't you just say, just when you just explain, how much of one, how much of that adds to a taxpayer? $100 a year, just say with funky figures.
More than that. I don't think, I'm going to guess, I'm really guessing, 150, maybe 200, but I'm really guessing.
But we just increased taxes by $88 and that's to pay for the operating costs and residents aren't happy about that.
Okay. I just want to add that my, if you allow us to bring this to the town, to buy this property, that I will look into getting donations for the fields and so I would try to get it donated.
I, I'm not, I'll tell you, I'm not opposed. I, I'm not, I'll tell you, I'm not opposed to you bringing it to the town.
Yeah.
I, my honest opinion, I don't think it's going to get approved. And I'm gonna be 100% honest with you, I wouldn't vote for it. Because right now, it's your backyard. And I get it 100%, but what about the people on Walnut Street when it's in their backyard? And then what about the people on 106 or further, anywhere in town, when it's in their backyard? It's not your problem, but it's the town's problem.
It's also on wetland. There is also that we are, most of our basements are flooded. Building those houses is going to increase the amount of water that is going to, the water's still somewhere, so it's gonna go in our backyard.
Not to mention the water table changing already from the massive building they put in West Bridgewater.
And I, I don't dispute, and that's my argument.
To have this amount of houses behind the septic system with the water, it's that, it's just, I don't know how it even got approved by the Board of Health. That it's not sanitary to have that amount of sewers be in a wetland.
And that's why I think you should be fighting this to the state.
Okay, so how do I do that?
If our bylaws were being applied.
How do I fight the state?
If our bylaws were being applied, you wouldn't be getting 60 or 70 houses. You would be getting, David, upwards of 20.
No, I was guessing eight to 10.
Eight to 10. If our bylaws were applied, that's what you would be looking at right now, eight to 10. But because of the 40B laws, that's why you're looking at that many houses. And like I said, and I'm just being honest with you.
No, I understand. I've gotten feedback from the town as well.
Yeah.
I understand where, and if I didn't have children and if it wasn't in my backyard, I probably wouldn't be fighting it. But I'm doing this for my children and the children in West Bridgewater. This is not.
It's not right.
You know, I do, with this, what's happening here, every time I turn around, how many more do we have? Do we have a quota? But nobody ever answered that question. I mean, and after we have a quota, we don't have to have any of those 40Bs here, okay? But what is the quota? I mean, you know, that question should be answered.
Well, we know what it is. We need roughly, what, 80 more affordable units?
So in other words, if we get the unit here and there's another one that's developing off of West Chestnut Street, it's gonna come in before us and a few others around. So the next thing that we give 80 or 90.
So we're halfway there.
So then we can refuse this right off the bat? Is that how this thing works?
Well, it's first in, first out. First, first built goes to the quota.
Right.
So if his property gets in first.
Yeah, so they all rush and then they get first because this will probably be the last hurrah. Because 95, 96 houses, that's a lot of houses on a piece of land that probably shouldn't be built on anyhow.
No, my house shouldn't have been built.
You know, you don't.
How much is it gonna cost for a new school? Because that many houses going, you're gonna have to put a new school in.
Right, but it's.
How much is it gonna cost for a new school?
That hasn't even, no one has even considered that. The school board has not even looked into anything that the amount of children that these 96 houses are going to bring.
Right.
But you're gonna face the same thing whether the 96 houses are built there or the 96 houses are built on another piece of property. You have the same issue.
At least it won't be wetland.
Oh, where is it, where is their dry land in West Bridgewater? I have two-some pumps in my basement. There, I mean, really, everything gets filled to build. And, and what I'm saying is, if, if yours was to succeed, you're still gonna have 90 houses built somewhere else. So you have the same threat to your school.
Or you don't have them, they aren't on the books yet.
But they're coming.
There are other applicants.
There are other applicants.
We only have to entertain one at a time, so that's why they get pushed until after this project comes to either completion or dies.
I got a hand.
Sorry, I don't mean.
Got a name for the record?
Alyssa Simmons, 54 Mcdonald Street. I am lucky enough to have dry land, but this concerns me not only with my friends, my neighbors, and my child, but the state of West Bridgewater. And if this isn't the format or the place where we need to be having this discussion or the fight, who do we as a community go to for the state to kind of get guidance to be able to bring that fight to the state? Because I think that's, what I'm hearing is that this isn't where our fight is. Our fight needs to be brought to the state. Because I'm kind of getting from the three of you that you agree with most of us in the room that this is a bad choice.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all, that it's, the whole, it's a bad choice.
I just think that some of us need maybe the right place where we need to bring this argument to.
So.
We would have to go to court, correct? We need a lawyer.
I don't know. I don't know. And that's why I wanted the 40B study done. That's why I've been pushing for it for a year. And it's not been funded. So I don't know what the answer is here, David.
Look, we don't, we don't have a legal case to fight it on a, from a legal standpoint because they're following the law. What to answer your question, though, is, is that we have a state delegation. Michelle Dubois from Brockton is our state rep. Walter Timmeltie from Milton is our state senator. I would request a meeting with both of them, explain the situation. Quite frankly, what I would really do is that I would request a meeting with both of them onsite, so that way they're physically there. And that way you can showcase exactly what it is that you're referring to. Look, I feel bad for all of you. I've said this to anybody and everything, everybody, including Bishop, is that many of you, your homes aren't that old. They're only 15 or 20 years old. So when those homes were originally built and you put the decks on the backyard, and I see them because I've been down there and I'm looking the other way at you, you guys believed, whether it was through a realtor or just doing your own due diligence, that most of that was wet, it was never gonna be developed, you would see it forever, you'd have a nice backyard, you'd see the wildlife, and that's what attracted you to buy the house. And so this is why I'm telling you, you know, they're, they're not showing their emotions, but every single one of them, we've had this conversation, that all of us agree that this is just not right and it's not fair. Because we know that you never expected this day to occur and you had no expectation that it should have occurred. But those are people you have to start with. I will tell you this, especially with Michelle, you have an uphill fight. She comes from a city. They want density. I debate, I've shared this with Selectmen Rays earlier. I am very friendly with a professor in Massachusetts that advises the state legislature on 40Bs. He's in favor of them. I argue with him all the time. My feeling is, is that as a municipality, we should have some local self-determination as to what we would like our community to look like. You came here because you want to be in a rural community. You moved to that street because you want to be in a rural section. Somebody else now making millions of dollars is coming in and taking that away from you and the state is championing that under the auspices of affordable housing.
If I could interject, not only is he making millions of dollars, he's afforded more rights than you or I would be if we wanted to add on a deck or add on to our houses. We'd be subject to all of the local bylaws. So if I wanted to add on to my house, I have to have so many feet to the right. 40B comes in, it's cut by 80%, 90% for profit. It's not right.
But that is, they are absolutely correct. We have done everything we could do, quite frankly, although Mass DEP was part of it. He started this process, think about it, he spent $3 million on a piece of property almost five years ago and he has not been allowed to put a shovel in the ground. People should actually be applauded at this level, that it took that long to get to this point. Because he wanted to put a shovel in the ground four and a half years ago. But at the end of the day, if he's following the rules and the laws, we're out of, you know, we're out of buttons that we can push.
Yeah, but he was told if he couldn't put it in, the shovel in the ground in two years, he had to start everything over. He didn't get to start everything over, he just continued.
So the CMR, which is the state regulation that is pertaining to this, allows a three-year window. And at the conclusion of those three years, he refiled the petition with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Zoning Board of Appeals granted him a two-year extension. Now, we probably could have had the Zoning Board of Appeals, quite frankly, it's not like the Zoning Board of Appeals consults this board. They probably could have voted no on that, but then we would have faced pretty costly litigation because it was a state agency, a government agency, Mass DEP, that was precluding him from going forward. So you really couldn't hold him accountable for not putting a shovel in the ground. The purpose of that regulation is to not be granted a permit and then sit on the property to remarket it to somebody else at a profit. And he wasn't doing that. So we would have lost that fight. So that's why they were granted the extension. And that's why I say we've run out of buttons to push because we pushed all those buttons.
The other option, going to the state, they're still gonna have the option, you know, if they, they want to come before our town meeting too, even if it would be a hard sell, like we, we know it would be a hard sell. But, but you ought to take all the options we can to try to get something moving here, you know?
Can they, can they get it on the town floor through a petition?
They can. So if they want to petition, I, did you receive my phone, my phone calls? Okay, good. If we could do this, I'm in the office, I've got a lot of meetings tomorrow, but let's try and talk tomorrow and I will get you the exact number that you need because it's based on a percentage of voters.
Right, that's one way to get it on the line.
So you could petition it. What that means is, is that when we go to town meeting, we use these really fancy old English terms called a warrant. It's just an agenda. And we call these warrant articles, they're just subheadings. And one of those subheadings is what you want. You want that article to state to ask the town to purchase the property. This board can exclusively place anything on the warrant that they want, and they're the only ones in the town that have that authority to do it. Except if you decide by petition you have enough signatures, you can force the issue by saying, "We want this on there." And that's exactly what Denise is referring to. And I think part of the reason that she's referring to it is not because they're not looking to take action on it, it's affected by through that petition, is when you're going to be able to gauge support as to whether or not, are you gonna get enough signatures and then can you get enough voters? And when you borrow money, I want you to know this, it requires a two-thirds vote, not a majority. So if you have 200 people there, you don't need 100 votes, you need 170 votes. It's only gonna take 30 or 40 people to vote no not to get it approved. So it's a very high bar, which it should be, because you're asking them to borrow money above and beyond, right? But just keep that in mind. So through that petition process, you determine whether or not you have enough support to be able to go forward. But I'll be more than happy to discuss that with you.
And that's precisely where I was going with it. Because if you, you're out there trying to gain the support and you're hearing from people, "No, I'm more concerned with the land over here or over there." You know going in how tough your battle is, but I, I think you have two ways to go here. I think, I think that's one. And I think you should do it. I would be doing the same thing if I were you. Secondly, I think it's time to reach out to Senator Timmeltie. I think you'll find him to be responsive. Because until these laws change, you're going to be dealing with this as long as you live in West Bridgewater. Even if you're successful, there's going to be another piece of property where a development's going to go in, a 40B, they're going to receive the benefit of the relaxed standards and the school system is going to be threatened once again. Because we, it's not going to be big enough to sustain 90, 100 more children, whether it's in your backyard or someone else's backyard. And, and I do 100% feel for you, I really do. It's not a good situation at all.
Okay, got a hand up, way back.
Hi. So you were saying that right now, this is the only 40B agreement that's on the table, but there's more behind it, correct?
Correct. So when this one reaches a conclusion, the next one's entertained, correct, David?
Okay, so let's say this one somehow gets knocked off. And then you said that in order to kind of put a stop to this and go by our bylaws instead of the state, you said to do like a 40B study. How do we get that? So that way we can kind of not keep having to, you know, have all these petitions and...
Well, we gotta get that quota. And then after that quota, and then we don't have to, we won't come under that. I mean, we could refuse it, you know, just refuse it, completely refuse it, you know? I, I think the best thing right now is, with a state, you know, the state is the one that's put this on the towns. I mean, you know, that's where the problem is. And we've, we've got to get them to change. I mean, and as long as they stand there and, you know, we'll, we'll help out as much as we can, you know, as far as local officials here. But my hand's been tied. What I'm, what I'm referring to, there's a, there's a big one coming up off of West Chestnut Street and it's gonna, and they, they seem to be working, they're working through the courts. And if you travel, you go over to the east side, I mean, the west side of Brockton, usually up there, and you'll see where the road is already in there, but, but that's, that's the big one. But they don't have any interest, so they're looking for, you know, for entrance so they can get in there. Also, we got, we got, we got a situation with, you know, fire and police over there too. I mean, that's a long, to go over there. So I don't know when that's gonna come in, but that's been out there for quite a while now. And I tried to, you know, working in Brockton there, try to keep up with it. But it's moving along, you know, it's, you don't hear much about it, all of a sudden it'll, it'll spring in on us, you know?
So just, if I could just respond to her, so right now, what we're saying is, we don't think this law is good for West Bridgewater. As a matter of fact, it's detrimental to West Bridgewater. The purpose of a 40B study is so we could gather the analytics together from a professional opinion on how it affects West Bridgewater. I mean, it's, I think it's unintended consequences with this law. Now, that, that study could go one of two ways. It's either in our favor that it's seriously detrimental to West Bridgewater and of course it could come back saying, "No, not really, not in comparison to other towns." There's no guarantee when you start out doing something like this. But what we've been doing all along is, is fighting this each and every time and saying, "Well, let's buy the land, let's buy the land, and, but you still have that quota to me." So it's never going to go away unless you buy...
Can you get rid of that quota if you have the 40B study done?
No, no, it's not automatic. What you would do, I mean, the process I foresee is, and let's say it went best-case scenario, you do a 40B study and it's deemed seriously detrimental to West Bridgewater because we have so much wetland. And the way developments are coming in with these very relaxed bylaws, or relaxing our bylaws completely, is detrimental to all of the property owners because of the flooding, the issues you face with flooding. And whatever other issues there are, and then you've got to fight it at the state level to see what modifications we need for West Bridgewater. It's a lot of work. I mean, this is, I'm talking a lot of work. It's not a quick answer. But this problem's not going to go away until we either reach our quota or buy up all of the available, available land to stop the building. And residents in the town are very sensitive to their taxes and rightfully so.
So there is another option through the planning board. The planning board would have the ability to implement a policy that if, for all developments, they'd require 25% to be affordable, even if there are six houses, not a 40B project. If they would implement that, then 40Bs wouldn't be able to be proposed. Did I get that right, David? Is that pretty much right?
Yeah, close enough, yes.
So if the state says 10?
10, but we would not have to entertain 40Bs anymore, would just be regular developments, but it would be all regular developments over a certain size, say six, six houses or more, would have to be 25% affordable.
So how would that, how would that?
Planning board, I believe, would implement it. So it would affect the regular developments.
Why would that?
It'd make it detrimental to them, I think.
Right. But how detrimental when they can have a two-inch barrier between them and the wetlands?
Well, they wouldn't, they would no longer be able to have it. The regular developments, I'm talking.
It wouldn't be under a 40B.
Correct, it wouldn't be under a 40B, it would just be a regular development.
So a regular...
They'd have to follow our laws, not the 40B laws.
Correct.
I'm still not understanding. So what you're saying is the 40B laws wouldn't be applicable?
We wouldn't have to entertain 40Bs any longer because we'd have a plan to get to the affordable number.
Right, but we'd still have to get to the affordable number.
But it would be all regular developments that would have to follow our bylaws.
So how would that affect? Let's just say their situation, how would that affect?
Wouldn't affect theirs because theirs has already been approved. But future.
But say it wasn't approved? How, because I'm thinking the rest of the town...
Be able to build 10 regular houses and two of them would have to be affordable.
So, but they could still build 40 houses?
No, no, no. David said the parcel would get about eight to 10 houses.
That's what I'm guessing. Our bylaw states a minimum lot size is 130, I mean, is 30,000 square feet. One acre is 43,000 square feet. It's 32 acres, so that would be about 32 homes, but then you have to allow for roads and others. So, exactly. So, um, and of course, that 32 isn't exactly a square. Um, so that's why I'm saying eight to 10, maybe 12. Um, so what Anthony, what Selectman Kenneyhan is referring to is absolutely correct. Is that the planning board would have to write a housing plan. It has to be approved through the same agency that oversees the 40B units at the state, Mass Housing. Mass Housing approves it as a comprehensive housing plan. And the intent of it is, is that the town will actively promote, advertise and market to have affordable housing in its town. And as a part of that is that a minimum of 25% of all new homes built will be required to be affordable units. So under Selectman Kenneyhan's proposal, a developer comes in town that wants to do 10, 10 normal houses. They would be required to build at least three of them, indeed restricted for affordable housing. If that were to be, if that's planned, approved, marketed, consistently marketed till we get to the 10%, then we would be able to control it through that mechanism. Of course, some of the negatives is, is that people don't always want to promote a town that we want affordable housing. Because that's what you're doing, is you're advertising for that. If you just get the plan approved and you don't advertise it, then the state can take the, the plan away. Because you're using it as a tool just to thwart it. That's not the intent.
My assumption is this isn't something that just came to light today. This is something that we could have been, we could have been able to do for several years. But we didn't for some reason.
This board took a vote and requested the planning board to initiate the process a couple of years ago. And the planning board voted against it.
Did the town know about it?
Yeah.
I mean, this board is on camera. It's on, on agenda. It took a vote. It's a public document. I sent the memo to the planning board. The planning board is a publicly elected board. Their meetings are open like this one is here. They put on the agenda, which is a public document. They voted on it in public. And they said no. Um, and their rationale is, is that, um, a developer that comes in, like for example, there's two new developments on the other side of town, the farm and Pearl Road. Is that we would say you are now going to be required to add five, six, seven, eight, 10 homes, whatever it is, is affordable units. And, you know, there are some, some nuances to that. And the planning board did not want to go down that road and that's why they, they voted no.
Can we try to vote again on that?
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, I can, we can't do it tonight, but I can, if the board wants me to, I can place it on the agenda for next meeting. We then send another memo to the planning board. And then all of you can go to the planning board and then say, okay, can you vote yes? Um, and then we have to write a plan and submit it to the state and wait for that approval and hopefully we receive it. Um, I will say we are getting closer to our 10%, um, but we're not there yet. So it's only a tool.
No, it's an avenue to go.
So I want to do that, if you can. Thank you.
Okay. You get it on to the next, uh, couple of weeks?
If that's the intent of the board, then that's what I will do.
All right, anything else?
I think you have some questions.
Go ahead.
Um, is there any towns in Massachusetts that have been able to get around that anti-snow law or that you know of?
Just to give us some hope. I don't know of anyone who's fought it to that degree.
So, um, everybody who has fought it has lost through the court system. However, what Selectman Kenneyhan was referring to is a comprehensive housing plan. And there are, I don't know off the top of my head, there are three or four that have been approved. Let me tell you, the process is arduous. It's long. It usually requires money. I can't write it. Usually you have to hire a housing specialist that does it. So it's going to cost you $10,000, $20,000 to write the plan. It goes to the state and the state then approves it, assuming they approve it. And again, they don't look at it within one week. Um, so there's only a couple of this, 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts. I can tell you, not even 1% has an approved plan and plenty of them have been submitted. So they're very strict because they recognize at the state that most people want to use that avenue just to stop the development. They're not going to allow you to use that tool to stop it. So they're going to be extremely careful about the ones that they approve. It has to be extremely well-written and then it has to be meticulously followed. But we can certainly make the attempt.
When those towns have tried to fight the 40B laws and you said they lost, were they fighting it based on the merits of its detrimental effects to their town? Or were they fighting it on the merits of, we don't want it?
No, it's always, I mean, in order to have a legally viable case, it would be on the first one. And usually it had to do with wetland protection areas. Again, most, the Conservation Commission law, and I don't remember the chapter off the top of my head, that was established for Massachusetts, I think it's chapter 40. That was established and it says in law, we do not want development within 100 feet. And as a result, we are going to require, not ask, require every municipality in the state of Massachusetts to have a conservation commission that is going to review all construction within 100 feet. And in addition, if that local municipality would like to have a new touch zone, meaning that you can't build anything within that period, you can freely do it, which we did. We made it 50 feet. And yet, even using that as the basis, they have lost. Because you would think that the state on one hand is saying, we don't want construction in wetland areas. And yet, when it comes to affordable housing, that policy has, um, taken more priority than wetland protection areas.
Well, which is, you've got three options. You've got the state, you've got the, our planning board, uh, you know, to go after. And still the option of going before the voters. There's three options there. So I think that David continued lies on us and moving on the thing. And maybe next, next meeting, we can put that on the agenda as far as the planning board and be certainly glad. You know, well, I sit up here, you know, over the years and many years that I've been on the board. You know, your problems are my problems. Get them in the backyard. You know, these streams now, the, the town has never really kept them up. We, one time we had, I don't know what it was, $30,000 or $40,000 in there. Now we, uh, we depend on the, on the county. Well, you know, even where I live, you get flooded out. It's unbelievable. And, and those streams, that's another thing. The more you get, the more you're going to get in your, in your backyard or in your cellar, like that. And it's certainly a health issue too. Uh, so, but I'd like to see this thing, uh, you know, move along and, and see what we can do to help you. Because that certainly, like I said, uh, when I'm talking to you there, I talk with my backyard too. I'd like to be out there. So leave it that way, David, and you'll keep moving and you'll keep working with, with her here and, and keeping up, uh, up to know exactly what's going on, what option they have.
Yeah, so for our next steps, I said I'll place it on the agenda for next meeting in order to request the planning board to do a comprehensive, um, plan. Understand that comprehensive plan will not happen overnight. Most likely, if the planning board approves it, then at town meeting in May, we'll have to place an article to secure funding to hire a housing specialist to write the plan. Then they write the plan, submit the plan. So you're probably talking at best case a year before you get a decision on that. So that wouldn't affect this project. And in the meantime, I will give you a call and we'll go over some other options as well. All right?
Okay. Yeah, I got, a more hand down here? Go ahead.
I got a question. Um, it sounds like it's not really going to be too effective with what people would like to do for the Scotland Street field. But the street itself has become another lane on Route 24. Is, is there any way you can limit the commercial vehicles? Two and a half ton like has been done on Crescent Street and, and various other streets in town? You almost need a detail car to get out of your driveway at certain times of the day. And it's going to get worse as soon, as soon as those warehouses down the other, on Scotland Street open up.
There's options that we can take. In fact, one of them was that I went through the Old Colling Plan Council to get an engineering plan. And it's on our agenda tonight, River Street. Uh, where they're getting all the traffic from the, uh, Scotland, you know, from the Bridgewater project down there. That's, that's a mammoth thing. That's, that's all coming up. In fact, June was speaking there, uh, right up through her neighborhood, you know, to, to avoid the, uh, they go through all the back roads and, you know, it's like, when they, probably should be going out Route 104. They're moving up into our, all the smaller streets. The streets were never made for that.
Well, when Charles built the warehouse in East Bridgewater, the town complained for 35, 40 years that West Bridgewater got the traffic and East Bridgewater got the taxes. Okay, so now Bridgewater's on the other side of the river. They're getting the taxes, but we're getting the traffic.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
So why can't they, you know, limit, limit it to, uh, commercial vehicles restricted over two and a half ton?
Yeah. Okay, anything else? No. Okay, David.
How do you get that done?
Well, like I said, you've got to go through a, a process. You've got to have a, some kind of a study. I'm on the Old Colling Plan Council and I get this through, uh, as far as River Street's there. And there was no charge, but I don't expect they're going to be doing that free of us. We've got to put some money in that kind of a fund there, you know, to, uh, so we can have the engineering plans and, you know, the traffic surveys and everything else like that.
Engineering plans, somebody could do it with a cup of coffee sitting on the floor.
I know that. But they require, uh, you know, somebody with a stamp to, uh, they just won't, won't take. So like I was saying, uh, and, and I know this is, is going to affect other streets too. Because this, you know, like I said, it's your neighborhood and that's my neighborhood. And, uh, so we're trying to combat it, trying to move it, you know? As much as I, I can. And I certainly appreciated what Old Colling had at least get us a plan. And, uh, so now it's up to us to come up with a vote, you know? And, uh, and we don't want to hear from you. If, if the traffic is, is on your street there, just come in. I mean, you're coming in now and the land there and hey.
Well, I definitely am complaining about that traffic coming, the big trucks.
That's another issue that we can talk to them about. Well, okay. Thanks for coming in. Like I said, we'll do what we can to try to alleviate that situation down there because it's not good. And, and it looks like it's going to get worse too if we don't do something about it. And that's going to affect everything, you know, like you said. And, you know, I have to believe in new schools, new this, new that. I mean, you know, yeah.
Hi, Kim Foley Farm Road. I was just curious if the development that's being, um, spoken about off of West Chestnut in Brockton that is on West Bridgewater land as well, right? A certain percentage of it, um, is that 40B or is that just single-family street development and sale?
Do you know, that's going to be?
Nothing's come to us for that, right?
Nothing's come to us.
That's still in Brockton.
And where is their?
Still in Brockton, yeah.
You can, where do they exit? Is it?
West Chestnut.
West Chestnut, but they don't have no exit there.
Right.
Yeah, they're still fighting Brockton. We haven't seen any proposals yet.
They're in the courts for that and trying to, you know, move it along, you know?
But do we know if it's a 40B? That they're in courts over? That they're in court over?
They are not in court over the 40B.
Oh.
Um, it just, the attorney for the project actually stopped in to see me today. Um, I did not speak to him. I've spoken to him in the past, but I didn't speak to him today because I was preparing for this meeting and I was in a meeting. So to answer your question is that the original proposal does not envision 40Bs. However, there is a land adjacent to it and that person is trying to create it as a 40B and using the entrance way that would enter this other parcel to get to his parcel.
Which is Wall Street.
So, um, there are some nuances with it. It is in court. The reality, the truth of the matter is, I assume most of this is public information, is that the reason it was being fought in Brockton was because the now deceased mayor, Bill Carpenter, did not want the project. And so it was tied up in court. What the new mayor is going to want to do, I don't know. Nobody knows at this point. If he decides that he doesn't want to keep on facing legal costs, he may decide not to fight it anymore. And then at that point, then it would start going through the permitting process, both in Brockton and in West Bridgewater. And then what normally happens is a developer says, I want to do X. But then reality sets in. They have to build streets and septic systems or whatever the case might be. And then they realize, I can't do all of this. And then it becomes smaller. And then that's when they attempt to convert it to a 40B because then they can skirt some of those regulations. So right now, the short answer is the original proposal is no and adjacent proposal is yes. But my guess is that those are going to attempt to morph at a later date.
Because they would need you in terms of the access to get in and out?
Um, not necessarily, but there are septic concerns up there. And, um, and so it's going to be tied more to what it can do for septic capacity.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, for coming in. And like I said, we're going to see what we can do on our part and just keep fighting and working together. Uh, and, uh, maybe something can be done here.
Al, there's one more.
Yeah, one more.
Sorry to be the last one asked, but-
No, that's all right.
Can you just say your name, please?
Um, Stephanie O'Malley. So it seems like our overall problem is the 40B. That's going to make this happen, whether it's in her backyard, my backyard, your backyard. It's this, until we meet this quota, we're going to keep having this problem. So you said that you want to try to get funding for that?
Been trying to get funding for over a year to do a-
So how can we get the funding to stop that so that we don't have to meet that quota?
So we, Senator Tim- uh, Timmeltie, at one point came to us, well, through David, and asked what we would like to see to, to get funding for.
Yeah.
And that was one of the requests. I think we requested $25,000.
That is correct.
And that didn't materialize. We also went to, oh-
Yes.
Just to get, well, to get a study done and then try to proceed from there to see if we can put some influence on this law and prove it's detrimental to us. Because I've been sitting here for two years. I've been in town for a long time. And this subject just keeps coming up over and over again. And, and we're fighting each other over it because while you don't want it in your backyard, we don't want to pay for it. Your neigh, you know, your neighbors on the other side, they don't want to pay for it. And then there's the threat of the school, which is accurate assessment. So we also requested the money from OC.
Town meeting. We can fund it at town meeting in May.
So could we get?
We asked for it once and we didn't get it. We, we could ask for it again.
I think we should put, if we can't-
We want him to put it on, on a bond and bill.
Okay.
That's, that's where it goes, on a bond and bill, a certain amount of money. Because when, uh, the other senator was there, we, we moved a lot of stuff and that's when we got to high school and all that. Uh, unfortunately, got in all that trouble.
Some of us are aware of this 40B now after sitting here. And we now know this is affecting us negatively. So we could get, try to get that funded. Maybe we can stop it from happening and having to get that quota?
So if I'm, I'm just going to jump in. Um, so the intent of the study was as follows, is to, as Selectman Ray said earlier, is to have a bona fide educational piece of material that we could use as a tool in an attempt to be able to change legislation. This has been on the books since the 1960s. Many municipalities have fought and all of them have obviously lost because we're still here. But many of the times when they're fighting, they're fighting using the arguments that you're using. I don't want it in my backyard. I don't want to see it. It's going to increase the school system. It's going to increase traffic. The purpose of the 40B was as follows. In the 1960s, a lot of people lived in an urban area in the Boston zone. There wasn't enough affordable housing. And so what they did was they pushed it out onto smaller municipalities who all like West Bridgewater have certain restrictions. Look, you want a home with a yard, right? But people in Newton didn't care as much about that. In order, if you want an acre of land, you have to pay for it. But in order for someone to pay for it, they have to have the money. And so the state legislature looked at it at that time and they said, if we could condense it into a smaller area, it won't be as, it won't be as costly for people to be able to buy homes. So we're going to rewrite the law to create lesser expensive homes, if you will. And unfortunately, that pushed a lot of the housing outside of the urban areas, which is what we're experiencing in West Bridgewater. And through the years, as all these hearings have, have occurred, is that Selectmen, sometimes mayors, although very rarely, it's usually Selectmen, or town administrators, town managers, that are usually petitioning in front, using the arguments that everybody is using in here. Selectman Ray said, let's take a more sophisticated approach. Let's get a housing expert, create a real study about what the detrimental effects are so we have something in hand. So now we can then reach out to other towns that look like us and through the power of numbers, go into Boston with that study and say, look at Rochester, Plainville, other towns that look like us. Let's go together and use the study and be able to make and change these laws. And that was what, what the hope was. And unfortunately, the grant that we applied for through Senator Timmeltie's office was not funded. So the only other option to do at this point is we could go to town meeting. And again, we would ask for $25,000 from you. And we would say, let's go out and hire a firm and create a study and then go to work and see as to whether or not we can change the law and bring other towns with us.
Okay. Can we get a sooner town meeting than May?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. Like I said, I think we did a conference summary. At least we got some avenues to go. And certainly the board, uh, I think the whole three of us, you know, are very, very supportive. supportive of you and try to do something for you and try to get this thing resolved. I know it's a, it's a hard nut to crack, but we just can't give up. You've got to keep fighting this thing, you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to move River Street up, okay? June, I'm going to move River Street up for you people. Next thing on the agenda. You have a motion?
Want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. David, you need to make a motion?
We do. So.
So.
Yes. What the only, if you are, if you are in favor, if you are in favor of placing a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on River Street, then you would, I need two motions from you or wrap it into one motion. One motion is, is to vote in the affirmative that you would like to do that. And then two, I need to have direction from the board as to what you want to do for time. You could do a 24-hour exclusion. You can do a daytime exclusion. You could do a nighttime. You could set the parameters. I just need to include that in the letter that I sent to Mass DOT.
So, I'm, does Eldon need to announce first that he's moving it up on the agenda or can we just proceed?
Okay, so I can just move it up? Okay, so the next thing we're going to move is the F, vote on commercial vehicle traffic restrictions on River Street. Okay, and that's just.
I would like to make a.
Just tell her, just to make sure you got that from.
Okay, I'll give it to my clerk and maybe she can read it and.
So, you want me to read it?
Read it, that's from one of the.
And Selectmen Ray, so you're more than welcome to read it, but I did speak to Reverend Ashton. It is up here. It is, it's already a part of the official record.
Okay. So, I think I, we've had a lot of discussion about this already. I'm prepared to make a motion and to approve the exclusion of heavy vehicles from River Street. And that would be 24 hours.
I'll second it. I would just like to note that I think OCPC will be doing a study on the impacts that caused from it. So, I mean, there is also the possibility that it could be changed at some point. It could be reversed at some point.
I'd like to know, you're on a street over there that has found vehicles, they're going to be allowed still to go on the street.
Yeah, no, but what I was saying was that OCPC, once there's, the exclusion happens, they'll do another study to show what the impacts are from the commercial exclusion. Just saying that it is possible that at some date it could be reversed if there's too much of an impact to 106. But, yes. Yeah.
So, when it's overdue that they widen 106?
Right, I completely agree. And many other streets, yes.
Then we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be at fault, you know, and be jeopardized as far as heavy vehicles because of lack of that happening. Right now, like I said.
Well, I think.
You have to stand behind your mailbox to get your mail.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a curb right at the top of where I live and where the mailbox is at. And they would just assume run you over.
I was driving on that road. I live on that road and a big truck came up and he literally pushed me off to the side of the road because the road's not wide enough.
Yep.
So, what Anthony.
So, we're going for it, yeah.
We're in agreement with you.
Just saying that it is possible that something could happen eventually.
Wants to let you know that regardless.
I was over June's house and you can't even back out of the driveway, I don't mind, you know. It's unreal, you know.
We have to back out until.
Yeah, I know.
Could you count back out? You have to drive.
Yeah. Well, okay, we got a motion, right?
Motion in a second.
In a second. Any other discussion on it?
I think the only part of it that in addition needs to be, we need to know is the, how that's defined. You know, heavy motor vehicle, heavy, heavy, what's the wording? Thank you, heavy commercial vehicles? How is that defined? What's the weight limit?
Well, I can tell you that.
Okay.
So, in Massachusetts, a heavy commercial vehicle is defined as 10,000 pounds or more, a motor vehicle that transports more than 15 passengers excluding obviously buses, or a motor vehicle that carries hazardous materials.
So, it's going to be posted and what's the timeframe as far as to get this thing?
That I do not know because we'll, there's still some more work we have to do on our end. We have to pull, basically, we have to prove that it's a residential area, all the other things to go along with it. There's about 12 different criteria that's all needed. You can't just get 11 out of 12. You need all 12 out of 12. So, we'll put that document together and then we'll send it off to Mass DOT. We'll obviously do it pretty quick on our end. I don't know how long Mass DOT will take. I mean, I don't know if it's a couple of months or if it's longer. I just honestly don't know.
Are you need two motions?
No, one motion is fine.
I put it into one motion.
You did.
Okay, and there was a second?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Yeah.
What would you do for weight, like five ton?
It's set by state law. It's 10,000 pounds. So, it's, yeah, so it's what, five ton?
All them gravel trucks are well over that weight. Empty, they weigh about 22,000 pounds.
And just for the sake of clarity, because I think I did say heavy equipment, the motion was for heavy commercial vehicles and for 24-hour exclusion.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All for the vote? All's in favor? All right, good answers.
Can I just ask a question in relation to the other thing that, the previous thing? So, as far as the planning board, is that something that you can make a bylaw at town meeting and have people vote on it versus having to go through the planning board?
No.
Just to make sure that it gets passed? It has to go through them? And so basically, if they vote it down, we have no say?
You have a say in voting for the planning board. I mean, but, I mean, look, I don't want to open up, but if everything went to town meeting, let's just get rid of all the boards. I mean, the state legislature has given authority to respective boards and the planning board has that authority. They don't really have a lot, but that's one that they have.
But that doesn't prevent you from going to their meeting when it's on the agenda for them to discuss it and having input.
So, can any elements on the agenda for the planning board?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, it just seems to me it's like the 40B study. I mean, I think it's an important thing that that, I mean, you're shooting yourself in the foot if you don't do that. And I think the planning board needs to follow through and be responsible to make that law so that we have more, you know, something more to fight everything that's going on. Because West Bridgewater is right next to 24th, so, I mean, people want to live here. And so like, it's just like, I don't know, it's, it's going to be hard to hang on to West Bridgewater because of all the developments. So, we have to have all the ammunition that we can get to protect ourselves.
So, our agendas are posted on the calendar, on the West Bridgewater, yeah, on the website. Our agendas are posted on there. And are the planning boards? Planning boards' agendas are posted as well. So, you can know ahead of time what they're.
So, you're going to make that request to them?
So, we, yes.
Yep, so what we'll do is, is on next week's, next meeting's agenda, we will then send a memo over to the planning board requesting them to reexamine this issue. And then it will be up to the chairman of the planning board at that point to place it on his agenda. And whether he does it right away or not, I don't know. I can ask him if, when, when and if he does put it on the agenda to inform me and we'll get the information over to you. But it's a separately, you know, it's a separate board. So, they don't normally communicate to everybody as to what's on their agenda. We all just take it upon ourselves to look at the, at the schedule. But if I can get the information, I'll be more than happy to get along to you.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just ask if the, if it is forced there, you know, that the trucks are excluded from River Street. There's signage on, in locations along River Street to suggest that they cannot go down the street?
Yeah, there has to be.
And just enforced by the police. Enforced by the police department.
That's entirely correct.
Okay.
So, once Mass DOT gives us the approval, then we will post the signs. That memo will go over to this, to our local police department as well. So, they'll be informed. And then it would be up to them then to enforce it.
Are the builders notified? Like it's up, this is coming, like one day there's just going to be a postal sign and?
As we take a vote.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're all set.
All right, we're all set. We took a vote and.
Thank you very much.
Glad to be of help for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so like we said.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, take care of yourself now.
Step one. My dogs and I survive. I know, right? To walk another day.
Budgets.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Julie.
Okay, I think we've got to go back here a little bit on our budgets there. And the first one is our treasure collector.
Thank you.
Budget 1450. How are you?
Good, thank you, Chairman. How are you?
You've been listening to this. Does the town have enough money to do all these budgets or?
No, I don't think so.
You don't know, huh? You're the guy we get for the answers, right?
Right.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, what we might do, just, I mean, if the board wants, has a question, just walk down, is there any areas there that there are increases over last year and is that what the board wants to do and how?
Yeah, I don't think there's any need to go line by line.
Go line to line.
Okay.
All right, so walk us through there. Any questions the board has?
The only increases I have, the first four lines are all salary contractual. The longevity line with the $200 increases for my longevity. And then the only other increase is 5305 for tax title taking services, requesting a $1,000 increase because the Registry of Deeds has increased their recording fees from $78 up to 108. So, that's $30 every time we have to record something. So, that's 30% increase. It's pretty substantial. So, that's the only other increase that I was looking for.
Any questions?
Nope.
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to.
7100.
7100, debt and principal?
So, on this one, these numbers, the budgets were in a little earlier. Some of the short-term debt, I don't have final numbers yet, but these are pretty much We paid off a couple of things, so that's why it's down 107,000. The increase of 19999 on Title V, the Septic Betterment Program, our last loan that we got from the state went into repayment. So, that's the first repayment next year. So, that'll be 20,000 a year for the next 20 years. All right.
Any questions?
Nope.
That's an interest?
And then interest is generally going down as we pay off the principal. So, there's no increases there.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, 7520, short-term interest?
And that's just one line for the interest on the short-term notes. It's been a steady 50,000 and keeping that the same.
Anything else you'd like to address the board with?
There's the last one, right?
That's the last one?
Or, oh, no, that wasn't the last one. No, I'm sorry, I was looking at Jev's. I'll make a motion to move these forward to the finance committee.
Is there a second?
I'll make a sec, I'll second it.
Okay, all's in favor? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I just had a question.
Sure.
How's our bond rating?
Good. We increased it about six months ago with standard impores up to an AA plus. So, the next step, if we can get it there, would be AAA, which is the highest. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Budget 2100, the police? Make this, you're up.
Is it 715?
Almost.
Somewhere.
We're going to make up, we're going to make up a lot of time now, you know?
Oh, we'll do this. We'll do this.
Okay.
All right, so the police budget?
Yeah, you know, walk through, you know.
I'm just going to walk through the increases. I know this is a.
We won't go line to line, where those increases are.
Right. Well, I know this is level services. There's one line that's not, I did put a little extra money, it's not level services. And I'll explain it to you. The one line that's clerical, it's up a little higher because she has a step increase, 10-year step. So, the step in, and then of course, we budgeted 2% for union negotiations. So, the step's a little over 5% and then the 2%, so that's why it's up 7. The other salary lines is the line that I used for dispatches. And I know I came back, came here with a, a proposal in FY18 that we would do a four-year proposal to get $40,000 a year for four years to fully fund our dispatch program. We got the 40,000 in FY18. FY19, we got 30,000. FY20, we didn't get any. We level funded it. We kept it at the 100,000. And so I tried to put a little money in there to try to get to a four-year plan. We're a little behind and I understand, even though it's a wish thing, I think it's best that we have civilians on the desk. I think it's cheaper, more cost-effective. So, even though I did add 13,000 to that line, it's not level services. I'm trying, it's going to give me some more time, more to build up. But we're still behind on a, well, my projections to do that. So, that line is up 13%, but basically $13,000. And like I said, I was hoping to be at somewhere near 160 plus to 30. So, that line would be somewhere around 190 right now, but we're behind funding that to where I thought we needed to be. The, the next line that's a little high is the longevity. It's not really high, it's 15%, but it's only $1,800. Some people reach different steps in their longevity. So, it looks, you know, looks high of 15%, but really it's only $1,800. Allowances stipends, you look, it's dropped 5% and it's basically only $1,400. And the difference is, we're replacing guys now. We have two openings we're replacing officers and the new officers would not be eligible for the cleaning allowance in September. So, I took that fourteen hundred dollars away from them, so that's why you see the decrease of the five percent. Don't beat me up next year, because that'll be back up to the five percent. I put some money into the fifteen hundred dollars into municipal building repairs. One thing that I'm proud of, we built that building, we moved in in April of two thousand and eight, you walked through the building now in twenty twenty, and you'd be hard-pressed to see the difference in the, in the care of the building. I did get the windows all done, and I got that, they put faulty windows in, but the warranty only gave me the actual glass, so I have to, I had to pay somebody to put it in. You know, uh, we've had, um, pumps go, circulating pumps go, um, garage doors unfortunately faltered one time, it went down, caught the back of a cruiser and dented. So, municipal, the building repairs and that, which is, was funded, I think, three thousand dollars, it's always been, I've never been able to stay within the three thousand dollars yearly. So, I tried to bump it up to just try to get to a, you know...
A reasonable figure.
Well, we're getting close to where we need to go. The next line that's up ten percent is, is telephone. And I just budgeted it for instead of ten to eleven, because last year, we spent just under eleven thousand. Hopefully, we can get that down a little bit, but those are kind of fixed costs. I put a little more money in uniform equipment, this will be, we're replacing two guys that left, we had one leave as a, just recently to join Brockton Fire. And to do academy equipment, it costs a little more money during those years. The next line is down fifteen percent, just twenty-four, a little over twenty-four hundred dollars. That line is a training expense line, but it's a minor one. I basically put money in that each year, uh, when we have to go to the academy, it costs three thousand dollars, that comes out of that line, so there'll be six thousand dollars coming out of the line for these two new recruits. And that, that money gets paid back to the town over time, that money, um, the six thing, that they stay here five years, then we reimburse them again. So, it's kind of goes back and forth. Last year, I had to put six thousand dollars into that line, because guys had made it past the five years. So, we had to reimburse them back the money they paid for the academy. So, this year, it's going down a little bit, because I don't have to reimburse anybody this year. So, that's why it's going down a little bit. I know it's quick here, but basically, the, the, the whole line is going up a little three, just under three and a half percent. And two percent of that is, is basically, well, we're gonna negotiate soon for contractual issues is fixed in there. And of that, over time, I do that time and a half, because you're gonna pay time and a half for that, so that goes up a little bit. Well, like I said, the only real money in here is that, that I put in there, it's not level funding, would be that thirteen thousand for the, uh, the dispatcher program.
Hey, can you quit a little bit? Okay, while you're here, there's two other things I'd like to move to, uh...
Do you wanna go over the K nine first, Eldon?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
K nine?
Excuse me, yeah, we got...
That's a really easy one.
All right, all right, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
The K nine program, although it has fixed costs, because we have, I put out the bids, uh, thing that we get J M Pet again, the fixed costs for that are, there's probably around three thousand dollars with the fixed costs. But, knock on wood, you know, for the last three years, we've stayed within budget on that. We did have a year where we seemed to, everybody wanted to come to us, we'd rather leave their dog, unfortunately, we picked them up, but, um, so that's staying level at the eighty-five hundred, I think, what is it, eighty?
Eighty-two fifty.
Eighty-two fifty? Sorry, this is such small print here. So, that's staying the same, I think it's, it's the best bargain, um, budget in town.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to pass these two to the Finance Committee.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, well, right now, I wanna move to, uh, G, you'll vote on the amendment of, uh, wait a minute, uh...
L, petition civil service.
Yeah, petition, uh, civil service. And maybe we can talk about that.
Well, as you know, civil service, we have to, to appoint full-time police officers, or like in this, permanent intermittent police officers, we have to go to the civil service lists for West Bridgewater. It becomes a little cumbersome, um, we did, uh, try to hire a full-time police officer, and he didn't make it through the whole process, because the process is not just the background, the process is medical evaluations and, and the standards through the academy. And through that, we had some issues. What I'm trying to do here is, it appears there's some really good candidates. So, I'd like to put on up to five, uh, permanent intermittents. That number may go down depending on how the backgrounds and the medicals and the physical part, if they pass these, all these phases, because you have to pass all these phases to be considered appointed. So, by that, is we then create a list for West Bridgewater. The civil service list in two years will go away, and you have to retake it again. This list will always be there. So, if we have four or five really good candidates, why not get the opportunity to put them onto this list? And that's basically what we're doing now, so I, I would vote to have up to five, but I'm not, I can't control if we can get five.
Okay, I'll make a motion to petition civil service for a permanent intermittent list.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second, I thought you were seconding it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and notice of Police Department Assessment for State Accreditation.
Well, as the board knows, and I know Anthony knows, last year, we reached certification, we reached it in just under two years. I'd like to take all the credit for it, but I can't. Lieutenant Nixon spearheads this, does an unbelievable job with it. And now, we are now, reached the next step of this within a year, which is full accreditation, which was another hundred and fifty-six standards. It's the highest level you can get in the state. Will be one of only about eighty, less than eighty municipalities, there are some colleges that have it in there that are full, um, state accreditation. And I want everybody to understand, there are municipalities out there that have been working on certification and accreditation for ten, twelve, thirteen years. Lieutenant Nixon has got this completed within three. He's had some help. We, and I gotta give the police officers and the staff that we have a lot of kudos, because this is a team effort. If they could put shoehorns in a lot of things, but they all understand, this is gonna be better to show the professionalism that we have here at the department. So, a lot of work's going into it. We have our assessment, they're coming in on March third and fourth, two-day assessment. We are very confident that we will pass the assessment. And then, there will be another award ceremony in June for reac- for the accreditation. And then, then we go to the next step, we have to be reaccredited every three years, there's new standards. So, this is an ongoing fluid thing, but it's a really big deal to get to this point.
Any questions to that?
No, great job.
Okay.
Good job, wish you the best.
Yeah, you're doing a great job over there, and getting it to do it, and we appreciate what you're doing.
They're all doing a great job.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, moving along, uh, budget here in, uh, seventeen ten Conservation Committee. How are you?
Hi, thank you, how about the board?
The board is here, busy. Okay, I can just kind of work us through if there's any...
Sure.
Increases, or that's what we hear from, and, uh...
So, there are some increases based on, uh, the contract, and, uh, I'm on my, uh, last year, or my third year of the three-year contract that I had. And so, the rate that you see, uh, has just reflected what the salary increase would be for, uh, my position, excuse me. I don't know if the board, uh, knows this, but, uh, I work twenty-nine point five hours a week using the general fund, um, as, uh, part of the payment, and then we take some money out of the Wetlands Protection Fund to augment the rest of it, so that it doesn't all come out of the town budget. And the Wetlands Protection Fund is, um, uh, built up based on the fees that we're collecting as people make, uh, their applications. It goes into the Wetlands Protection Fund. The, uh, line item fifty-one forty is a, um, increase in my longevity, because, uh, last year, it was prorated, because it was only working thirty-two hours a week, and now, I'm working thirty-six. So, the thirty-six has no factor, but it's considered full-time. Line item fifty-one twenty has been increased, uh, to reflect my new hourly rate for this year, and it's for the four hours a week that I work doing the MS four coordination. My cover letter indicates that it looks as if the four hours, uh, a week is sufficient to get us through this next fiscal year. But, we may have to look at it in the, in the following year, because it seems as if there's a few more items that the EPA is gonna require us to do. So, I'm just kind of mentioning that at this point, it has no bearing on this year's budget. The, uh, budget also reflects a two percent salary increase for, uh, the union employee, Kitty Doherty. She is also moving from a step seven to a step eight due to her years of service. And so, that's reflected in, in that line item, and she only works eighteen hours a week. Line item fifty-eight eighty-nine is for, um, bringing the number up by fifty-four dollars to just an even fifteen hundred. And, um, anticipating buying, uh, field equipment and field testing equipment to monitor the outfalls, uh, along the drainage, uh, outfalls along the streets. And we don't know how that's gonna work out, so I'm hoping that some of the other, uh, items in our, in our budget will, we could either take some from those, like postage or office supplies, and help with that if I need to, but it's, it's a guess at this point. It'll be the first year that we're buying the, uh, testing equipment, and, um, we'll see how that works out, and, um, like I say, since we're bottom-line budget, we're hoping to be able to use some of the other ones if we have to, but we'll see. The, uh, items for training, we have a MAC conference, uh, just to attend the MAC conference is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, and it's per person. And it's very important that, uh, the members do go to those training workshops, so that they understand what they need to do as conservation commissioners. So, we're asking to hold, hold that amount the same as last year's. And that pretty much sums up conservation.
Any questions?
Nope.
Motion, I move that on?
So moved.
Is there a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so, uh...
Thank you. You have open space, is open spaces...
Space Committee.
Yes, I just finished up with our meeting for this evening, and, uh, perfect timing, I guess. So, um, I just wanna say that, um, that committee is very, um, busy and very motivated to hold events, and we've scheduling, scheduling three events this spring. Two are, um, trail cleanup days and trail walks, and another is, uh, West Bridgewater Cleanup Day, partnering with Noonan to do cleanup along the roads and, and trails in West Bridgewater. So, the, uh, budget for the Open Space Committee is unchanged from last year.
I'll make a motion to pass this one along to the Finance Committee as well.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Thank you, you do a fine job.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, Marilyn's out there, out there, Conservation, uh, budget, fifty-four ten. How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Oh, good. I would do like to rest, uh, you walk us through any, any areas that increases, and then, uh, let it go on line to line.
Okay, um, bottom line is, uh, the budget has increased two point eight eight percent.
Yeah.
And, uh, majority of that is with salaries. I've increased hours for our outreach people...
Yeah.
Because of the numbers that come through the door, has increased, I'm going to say, by twelve hundred in one year for her to see. So, I've increased her hours as well as, um, given her a step increase in this budget. The other increase is one point three three percent for, um, other salaries. Most of that is with people that are earning under fourteen hundred, fourteen dollars an hour or thirteen dollars an hour, to bring them up to what's soon going to be fifteen dollar an hour, um, minimum wage. The building, um, municipal repairs has increased three hundred dollars, or twenty percent. The building is showing its age, in fact, I had a gutter guy come out today to look at the back gutters, because the, we need new brackets and such, so it's starting to show its age, and I'm seeing that we're not meeting our budget there, we're increasing every year over that budget. Ten percent on office supplies, I think that, um, at this point, we are preparing and mailing out sixteen hundred newsletters a month, and, uh, most of that is in paper and ink. The other is, uh, important one to me, is the dues and meetings and training, and, um, the Medicare, I'm not gonna say, it's just the Medicare changes every year, and the possibilities for people, and what they need is, is another training every year. Plus, um, one of my grants, uh, for Sue, for the, um, supportive care, requires her to have three trainings a year, and that's something fairly new. So, um, I'm going to have to add that to her, and knowledge is power, and I think it's important with all the changes, that people go to the, every conference they can, and get as much education as possible to help our, our elders and their needs. And I'm pretty simple and pretty conservative, so, that's it.
I would make a motion to move this budget to Finance Committee.
Second.
You're a second, and the other one, yeah, you do a fine job, Marilyn over there.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Take care, have a good night now.
Thank you, you too.
Mr. Chairman, did you, while Marilyn is here, did you wanna do G as well?
Yeah, yeah, G, that's right.
The amendments to the senior tax work off program.
Oh, yeah, 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 uh, amendment on the senior tax work, uh, program policy.
Yes, um, we, um, were, and you called it, by the way, um, that we might have gone too low in our, our levels of income in order to be part of the, and we don't have enough people to fill departments that are asking. And so, I did some more research, and since the first vote that you took, I did check the MCOA, and I also checked the, um, um, Finance State, and they both have, have agreed on this. So, I'm asking, so we can fill some positions. We only have a handful that are, um, with the old recommendation, the new recommendation, we'll be able to get all but three, um, of our people in, in the positions for the departments.
Working that out all right, so, yeah, any questions on that?
Nope.
Denise, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Okay, is there a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
We'll be making our calls to the department heads tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, we'll wipe that page out, so, uh, we'll go on to an action budget here in Agriculture Commission.
Yep, so, if it's okay with the board, all of these are small budgets, I'll handle all of them, and I'll kind of do it as a batch, and then if you have questions, I'll answer them.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Agricultural Commission, uh, is being level funded at six hundred dollars. Women's Place Crisis Center being level funded at twenty-seven fifty. Brockton Area Arc level funded at two hundred and fifty dollars. Old Colony Hospice Care level funded at two thousand. In Plymouth County Extension Services level funded at two hundred.
Okay, any questions, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass those to the Finance Committee.
Second.
You're a second. Any questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Did we do nineteen fifty? The wastewater?
Uh, we did not, that's a clerical error.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Amendment to the Agriculture, uh, why, as we want to look at, uh, Howard Street.
Yep, so, um, you all recall that this past year, we applied for and received almost three hundred thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand dollars to be exact, from Mass DOT in order to add, excuse me, a traffic light at Howard Street in Route one oh six.
Right.
We already have a, a engineering account that we set up at town meeting a handful of years ago, so the money's already there, we don't have to go and get more money. So, what we have to do now is, we have to engineer for it, go out to bid, determine what the costs will be, and then, at this year's town meeting in May, is that we would then ask the town to fund the difference between the two eighty-seven and whatever that would cost. So, at this point, we've, um, we met with three different engineers. GPI was, is the one that we would like to award the bid to, and it is before you, and I would ask you for a vote.
Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Annual town meeting, uh, town meeting, uh, survey results, and, uh...
So... Yep, so we did this as a, I think this is really interesting information. You know, there was, there was, Denise had requested this, Neil, you happened to be here that night when we discussed it as well. And so, we did two things. One is, is that we placed on our website an opportunity to be able, have people fill in the survey electronically, and then, we also placed this in the census, and you could see the responses that we received, and they're all pretty close, I mean, within a couple of votes.
That's crazy.
It really is. You almost can't make that up. So, yeah, I mean, then that's, that's the background data. So, with that said, um, you know, we had discussed about trying a May meeting, so it could be before Memorial Day, see as to whether or not that encourages more participation. We've historically done it at seven o'clock, I know there's been some discussions about potentially doing it at six, uh, and as you could see, that actually is the highest vote getter by a whole whopping one. But, you know, at this point, we do have to set the town meeting date. I would ask you that we set it from May eighteenth, and if you wanna do it at six o'clock, that's fine, but I would ask you to take a vote at the date and the time, so that we, at the next meeting, I could then ask you to open up the town meeting warrant.
Okay, is there a motion of that effect?
I mean, I guess six o'clock is the winner.
Yeah. So, I'd make a motion for, to have the town meeting May eighteenth at six o'clock.
Second.
Okay, uh, second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Nice, so voted.
I had to say something, that's, uh, give it a shot, if it don't work, people, everyone works the next day, and that's all of us, I mean, having all done forever, you people have to go to work afterwards the next day, eleven o'clock sometimes, we'll be there at eleven fifteen, so to see what happens, so, I mean, if it don't work out, just go back to seven.
I think the only thing I would suggest is that we, when we advertise the time, or, or put it out there on the website, the time, maybe, you know, highlight the fact that it's changed, we're having it an hour earlier, just so people don't flip through and say, oh, yeah, that's when the meeting is, but not pay attention to the time. oh, yeah, that's when the meeting is, but not pay attention to the time.
If it's signed down the thumbs, good. I push this hour a little later, but you never please me, but.
That's true.
You might rate it, right?
But Neil, we're pleasing you with 6:00.
I might not be there.
After all that.
Thank you. And then, under annual town meeting, because we're accelerating the schedule, and I've reexamined the schedule calendar, I believe, I'm 90% accurate on this, I think we could have to add a third meeting in April. Historically, this board considers whether or not to place warrant articles onto the warrant in one meeting, and then vote on your recommendations in a subsequent meeting, so you can study it in between. In order to do that, there are five Wednesdays in April, and so, April 22nd is the fourth Wednesday. And if we don't want to do Wednesday night, that's fine, but just staying with your Wednesday night meeting schedule, I would ask that we add a meeting. Again, we don't have to do that tonight, if you want to look at your calendars, but that's, if you think it works, that I'll, that's what I'll do.
Motion to add April 22nd to the calendar.
Second.
It'll be probably two of you, because I'll, I'll call any planning council out. I'll probably come to this meeting more important, I guess. You know, we always meet in the last of the month, you know. Okay, House in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sign the annual town meeting election warrant.
So, this is for your presidential primary. You just have to sign, vote to sign the warrant, and now where the town clerk can post accordingly.
Appoint election workers for special municipal employees.
I would ask you just to take a vote to name our election workers as special municipal employees. Almost every employees in this town have been named special municipal employees. For some reason, this one here fell through the cracks. And basically, what this means is, especially in a small town, is that an employee that works in the town, that is paid in a position, can then also work in another municipal position and get paid as well. And many of these people are seniors, and for example, one may be a, you know, a special police officer that's an election worker, and so, it just allows them to be able to do both positions.
You refer for full-time? Full-time employers are allowed to do this?
You can't have two full-time positions, but, you know, for these part, that's why they-
Or there's one full-time.
Yeah, but you can't have two full-time positions.
Okay, so you can still work part-time?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to appoint election workers as special municipal employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. House in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Okay, approved minutes of January 8th, 2020.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 8th.
Second.
House in favor?
Aye.
Accept for review minutes of January 22nd, 2020.
Motion to accept for review the minutes of January 22nd.
Second.
Second.
House in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communication and reports from boards, commissions, town officials, notice of the presupposed assessment for state accreditation, well, we already explained that. Correspondence and the public determine a course of action. Neil, got anything else to say about the public here? We're trying to do a good job.
Where's the snow?
Well, we don't need it.
Not here.
Okay. Any other personnel there that want to talk? No? Anything for the good of the yard? Board members, do you have any comments? Dave, anybody? Lana, do you have any comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You're second.
Second.
We going too fast for you? House in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.